The City of Riverbank Special City Council Meeting is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, November 25, 2014. It is 5:30 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Shall we pray? Gracious and ever-present Father, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to gather together and celebrate those who have been elected to serve our community. May you guide each of us in our leadership roles. Lord God, continue to grant unity, wisdom, and grace to our leaders. Father God, may you be glorified tonight and always in all that we do and say. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Janine Tucker is absent. Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cal Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Public business from the floor. No action can be taken pursuant to the government code in reference to a special meeting. The public has the opportunity to address the city council only on items appearing on this special meeting notice. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded. Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll go continue on to business. Item 2.1, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, reciting the fact that the consolidated general municipal elections held on November 4, 2014, and declaring the results of such other matters as provided by law.
Mayor members of the city council, our city clerk, Annabelle Aguilar, will provide an overview of the resolution regarding the election results.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you know, the November 4, 2014, general municipal election has concluded. Riverbank consolidated its election with the county statewide election, and therefore they conducted the canvas of the ballots that were returned, and they also certified the election results. We received those results, and as I receive the final results, I must certify to the facts of the election and also the final official results through a resolution presented to you as a city council and for your adoption. We declare through this resolution the persons for whom the highest number of votes were cast and that are the elected officers. There were a total of 3,337 ballots cast, and the two candidates that were elected are incumbent Cal Campbell, who received 1,857 votes, and the second candidate was incumbent LeAnn Jones Cruz, who received 1,727 votes. As your election is official, I would like to request that the city council adopt the resolution that is before you, declaring the official results as indicated on the attached Exhibit A, and that is the statement of votes. After adoption of the resolution, I will administer the oath of office, and I will present the certificates of election to our new council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I have city council comments, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for action or for comments and action.
I'll make a motion to approve item 2.1.
I'll second it.
Very good. All right, we have a motion to approve item 2.1 and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. I will now administer the oath of office. You will raise your right hand. And you will be put after me. I, I state your name.
LeAnn. Cal Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
For an investor.
For an investor.
That I will.
That I will.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take.
That I take.
This obligation freely.
This obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Is charged the duties.
Is charged the duties.
Upon which I.
Upon which I.
Am about to enter.
Am about to enter.
Excellent. Okay. I am Valadilar, city clerk, and the elections official for the City of Riverbank, will now present the certificate of elections to our new council members. I possess the certificate of election and oath of office to our new council member, Cal Campbell. Congratulations. Certificate of election and oath of office to our new council member, LeAnn Jones Cruz. Are you making pictures at this time, or you think you're fancy? Whatever you like, you want to take pictures.
Come on, everyone. Family members, come on up. Get your pictures with it. Where's the baby? I want the baby in there. Ah, there's a pond across the street. I played in it. Can we wait until we have Janine back?
We can certainly do that.
Welcome back.
You too.
Thank you.
At this time, comments are permitted. Do I have any from -- you're still the vice mayor, no matter what it says.
Yeah.
If none, then I'll go to Councilmember Jones Cruz. Do you have any comments?
I just wanted to thank you all for being here tonight, and I'd like to thank the city for putting on a good election, and I'm pleased to be here. Thank you.
Would you like to say any comments?
No, like I said, welcome back.
The only thing I'd like to say is that thank you again for a good election, excellent election.
Thank you.
You've done us proud one more time. And from the city manager, do you have any comments?
I'd just say congratulations to our newly-elected council members, Vice Mayor Campbell and Councilmember Jones Cruz, and also at this time would like to extend the congratulations from Councilmember Tucker, who is on medical leave currently. She wishes she could be here to congratulate you in person, but did want to extend her best wishes, and she's looking forward to being back in January. And so with that, I would congratulate all of you on being a fine council, and I know that this community was represented well by all of you.
Can I say something?
You had your chance.
I don't think you heard you.
You went by me too quick.
We're at the speed of government. Go ahead.
I'd just like to take a moment and thank all the people that supported me and put me back into this office, and I will do my very best to try to move our city forward during the next four years. Thank you so much.
Roll call.
Councilmember Janine Tucker is absent. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Cal Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to adjourn the meeting for a brief period of time to resume our next meeting at 6:00 PM. Congratulations, Council.
Thank you.
is now in order. Today is Tuesday, November 25, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Thank you, heavenly Father Jesus, for this wonderful day that you have provided for us. We thank you, heavenly Father Jesus, for the city council that you've placed in the leadership of this great city. We ask, heavenly Father Jesus, that you give them wisdom, wisdom to make the decisions that's best for each and every one in the city. We ask, heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless the great city that we have. Bless the staff, heavenly Father, leading God them. And heavenly Father Jesus, as we enter into this era of the Thanksgiving time, we just ask, heavenly Father, that each one looks up and remember, remember what Thanksgiving is really all about. And heavenly Father, it's to give thanks and praise to you, and we just ask these things in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Janine Tucker is absent. Council authority member LeAnn Jones Cruz?
Here.
Council authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Conflict of interest, any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations, and the first one is to Vina Pearson Hudson. Hudson, Hudgens, thank you.
Hi. How are you doing? Yeah. Yeah. That's going to be off the way. I have three to do, two to give. All right, so are we in the right position? I don't --
Do you want to face that camera?
We're going to face that camera there. I mean, it's what's behind that curtain there. All right, the City of Riverbank Certificate of Special Recognition presented to Vina Pearson Hudgens. Congratulations on the opening of your business in Riverbank. On behalf of the city council, welcome to downtown Riverbank.
Thank you so much.
And I really thank you for being here and participating in our downtown. It's a beautiful downtown.
Absolutely.
And you're bringing in a great business.
Thank you.
So you have to now say about 15 minutes worth of --
Be careful, I could do that.
So if you want to say a couple of words, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
That's close enough.
Well, fortunately for you, I don't need the -- which way do I run? This way or this way?
You can address it to whom?
To you or? I'll just stand here, how about that? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Vina Pearson Hudgens, and we have brought into the City of Riverbank a wellness and skincare studio. We have actually brought in over 300 clients into your city every month. As you'll notice, the streets are quite busy, and we've really enjoyed how much Riverbank has, has really helped us in establishing this business. I'm not a new business. I am a business that has been around for 18 years, and it's mainly been in Oakdale. So someone suggested that I try Riverbank out, and it's been amazing. We've actually, I can safely say, tripled our business since we moved here. We have fitness, we have skincare that we do, we don't do facials. We actually do, we work with patients or we work with clients that have problems with adult acne, rosacea, anti-aging. We're just not for women only. About 30% of our business is men as well. We have, we really enjoyed, like I said, being here, and the business has flourished. After 15 years, I can now say that it'll take you a couple of months to even get an appointment. So we're really, we're really pleased with, with the outpouring of not only the citizens of Riverbank, but we've brought a lot of people in from Modesto, and Oakdale doesn't mind driving, so my Oakdale clients didn't mind coming this way as well. But the staff has been amazing for us. They've taken care of any concerns that we've had, and we just really have enjoyed being here, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. When I get older, I may look into anti-aging.
And then it'll be too late.
And I'd like to call Paul and Debbie Fincher up here, please. Before I read the certificate and give the floor over to you, this couple here have done a tremendous amount of work, liaison, research, and bringing in a community that is inundated by people coming from the outside not caring about their, their neighborhood. And they started probably the best neighborhood watch, and it's not certified as a neighborhood watch, that you could find. The people come together on a monthly basis to talk about issues, possible solutions, and there are a lot of legal issues that we're trying to deal with, but you have been a great inspiration to a lot of individuals down there and to me personally. So, the City of Riverbank Certificate of Special Recognition presented to Paul and Debbie Fincher. Thank you for your dedication to the rivercoast neighborhood and to the City of Riverbank during your years as a resident of our community. On behalf of the city council and the City of Riverbank, best wishes and congratulations on your new home.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're in the middle, you go up. So he's going to take a picture right over there, and you have to smile. All right. Thank you. You want to say something?
Well, it's been really easy. I mean, the city council, everybody, the mayor, the vice mayor, Chief Kylie and everybody, and Sue especially, big hand for Sue. This should be going to them, you know, they're the ones who have supported us and helped everybody in the neighborhood, you know, jump over a whole bunch of hurdles to get to where we are now there. So if anything, the prayer mentioned earlier, you know, talked about supporting the council and them making good decisions and things like that, you know, those prayers are answered every day by this group in this community here and the people, the folks that lead this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
And Mayor, as you take your seat, I did want to let the, the public know that Lana Clayton of Farmers Insurance was, became ill and was not able to be here this evening. I also wanted to bring to your attention and those in the audience that we have Nubia Goldstein sitting in for Tom Helenan this evening. Nubia is with Churchwell White as well. In addition to that, we have two of her colleagues, Jamie Garrett, who supports the planning commission, and Carrie Fuller, who's been doing some work on a couple of the items that are before you later this evening. So I just want to acknowledge their presence and thank Nubia in particular for filling in for Tom this evening.
Thank you very much. Item 2, public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Do we have any public comments?
One up. Good evening. My name is Ramon Bermudez, on Roselle Avenue, Riverbank, for 20 years. There is an important bill in the Congress, HR 3850, which reauthorizes the federal initiative that provides funding and comprehensive services for older adults. It's by Representative of New York, Christopher Gibson. This provides for the, through the fiscal year of 2018. I encourage you all present and the body here of the -- well, we're almost complete now, but Ms. Janine is, you know, pray for her, please. And encourage you to call your representatives and let them know that we need action in this All-American Act, HR 3850. And on the local act, on the local news, it's number, poll number 69 for the light on Ward, the T section with, with Palmer. It's been out for a while. I walked in there and I'm glad I have my flashers with me, but we need a light also on number 162. It's poll number 162 on Jackson, the corner of Ward Avenue, and we'd be very much appreciated if we had some lighting there for us walkers that take some exercise at night. Thank you very much. Congratulations ahead of time. Ms. Janine, Mr. Campbell, welcome back. Ms. LeAnn Jones Cruz, keep forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we move on to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave reading. Item 3B, approval of October 14, 2014, city council LRA redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3B, one, approval of October 28, 2014, city council local redevelopment authority minutes. Do I have any discussion or any item to be pulled by the city council?
Mayor members of the city council, we were made aware of a slight error in the minutes of October 28. I believe the city clerk has revised that, and that is the vote on item 5.2. Need to reflect that there was a no vote by, by Mayor O'Brien on that item.
Does anyone from the public wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, bring us back with a recommendation from this council or board with the annotation of a no vote registered by myself.
Make a recommendation that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve as amended the consent calendar, and a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 5.1, introduction and adoption of urgency ordinance number 2014-013 of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, to extend the temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of new hookah lounges, e-cigarette lounges, vapor bars, and drug paraphernalia retailers within the city boundaries.
Yes, Mayor members of the city council, Mr. John Anderson, our contract community development director will be presenting this item to you for consideration tonight.
This is Mayor members of the council, John Anderson, contract community development director tonight for you to speak on this item. This is an item that was initially brought to you on October 28. It was part of a couple items that were brought forward as a moratorium. The other, the other item that was brought forward had to do with electronic gaming. That's on your agenda tonight for, for discussion specifically on that item. As it relates to hookah lounges, we would like to ask for an additional extension of that moratorium. The law provides for additional 10 months. After the last council discussion, October 28, we've kind of outlined for you on page three of your staff report just where we stand and where we think we'll be in disposing and dealing with this issue specifically for hookah lounges. It's, I think this, this schedule is a little aggressive, we might be 30 days off. I can tell you, as it relates to tattoo establishments, that we will be going to the planning commission with that item on December 16. Notices have been sent to the paper today for that item, so that will be taking place according to the schedule, but as it relates to the hookah lounges, we're probably about 30 days out for that one. So the resolution that's presented to you tonight is for a 10-month extension. If you so choose that six months is appropriate, that's fine. We're, we're well ahead of the curve, and we're, we're down the line on this. So I really don't have anything else, other, other to say that in your staff report, there's a proposed urgency ordinance, and that's 2014-013, and that's provided for in your staff report, and then that is suggesting the 10-month extension. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. So any questions from the public? Bring it back to the council for a recommendation or action.
I make a motion to approve item 5.1. No discussion? Anyone?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, and I will second it. We have a motion to approve and a second.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Moving on to item 5.2, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 11 Business Regulation by adding Chapter 124, simulated gambling devices to the Riverbank Code of Ordinance. by adding Chapter 124, simulated gambling devices to the Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
And again, Mayor, Members of the City Council, Mr. John Anderson will be providing an overview of the proposed ordinance for your consideration tonight.
Again, Mayor, Members of the Council, John Anderson, contract community development director of the City of Riverbank. This is an item that we had discussed on October 28th. We're bringing it forward to you as a proposed ordinance. It's been published in the paper and it's been available for the general public and has been available for circulation. So, in essence, this is an answer to a little bit more specifics as it relates to internet gambling. State law already provides for exclusions of this type of use, but this is a little more specific to the City of Riverbank and is focused on what we, what we believe are some of the more tangible issues associated with, with internet gaming. So, it does not affect internet cafes. We're not, we're not suggesting that it has everything to do with gambling aspect of it. So, it's simulated gambling devices which might be used to increase sales of services. So, then again, as of January 1st, 2015, state law will hold that businesses engage in sweepstake-like promotions revealed through simulated gambling computer interface to increase the sale of their services are engaged in illegal, illegal activity. Again, this proposed ordinance goes, goes beyond state law and, and deals with it specifically as it, as we might see it through the City of Riverbank. Includes more expansive definition of what constitutes a payoff as a result of simulated gambling devices, and then again expands what state law has suggested. Ordinance will still be able to allow internet cafes and business centers, as I suggested, without sweepstake promotions to open and operate within the city. Proposed ordinance is in compliance with the city's strategic planning session objectives, and specifically, this ordinance helps fulfill the three-year goal and enhance public safety. Simulated gambling device is defined, as presented to us tonight. Says that means any device that upon connection with an object is available to play or operate a computer simulated game where the player operation of the device may deliver or entitle a person or persons playing or operating device to a payoff directly or indirectly from the owner or operator of the device or that person's designated. And then it goes into the definition of a device and then basically does everything we need to do for internet gambling. So, this is the introduction of the, and reading of the first, and the first reading of this particular ordinance, as provided for in your staff report. There'll be a public hearing, of course, and then a second reading at your next council meeting, I believe. So, are there any questions? The proposed ordinance is found at the end of the staff report. Staff report is four pages. It'd be the, is starting on the first page of the proposed ordinance, 2014.
Are there any questions for the, for Mr. Anderson? I, I just want a clarification on, this is going to be a legal one January, no matter what. We're defining, we're making the definitions clearer than the state law.
Correct.
And that's all we're doing as well as enforcing the state prohibition.
That's correct.
Okay. Hey, if there's no question or comment, is there any public questions or comments? I bring it back to this council for further discussion or action.
I make a motion that we accept item 5.2.
A second.
There's been a motion to accept and introduce item 5.2, which is the first reading and introduction of the ordinance, and we have a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 5.3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, accepting the fiscal year 2013-14 Annual AB 1600 Report of System Development Fee Activities.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the City Council, as the title indicates, this is our annual report to you on our system development fees. This evening, we have Ms. Dondi Morel, who is our accounting manager, who are presenting the report, and Ms. Maricela Garcia, who is our finance director, will also be available to address any questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council.
You look nervous.
I am nervous.
We'll help you with that.
Bear with me here. So, my presentation tonight is on the fiscal year 2013-2014 AB 1600 Report of System Development Fees. My presentation includes what is AB 1600, the definition of system development fees, our legal reporting requirements, the active and inactive system development fee funds, AB 1600 report highlights, and our recommendation. AB 1600 sets forth specific requirements as to how local governments imposed, collected, and reported various aspects of their system development fee program, codified in Section 66001 of the California Government Code and became effective January 1st, 1989. Riverbank System Development Fee Program has been in effect since 1967 and is codified in the Riverbank Municipal Code under 150.31B. System development fees are defined as a charge by a local government agency to help fund and pay for the construction or needed expansion of infrastructure and improvements as related to new development. The purpose of these fees is to defray all or a portion of the costs of public facilities related to the development project. Our legal reporting requirements requires us to have the following information available to the public within 180 days after the last day of each fiscal year. It includes the description of the type of fee in the account or fund, the amount of the fee, the beginning and ending balance of the account or fund, the amount of the fees collected and the interest earned, identification of each public improvement on which fees were expended, identification of an approximate date by which the construction of the public improvement will commence, a description of each interfund transfer or loan made from the account or fund, including the public improvement on which the transferred or loaned fees will be expended, and the amounts of refunds made during the fiscal We do have some inactive fees, our funds, they're no longer collecting revenue, and expenditures were made from these funds with, are included within the capital improvement funds. This slide will show you just the amounts that we have remaining in the funds as of June 30th, 2014. Our inactive funds that did have expenditures this year, or previous fiscal year, I'm sorry, are funds 140, Bridge and Roads. The revenue source is interest, and it was used to fund the Jackson Avenue sidewalk project. Fund 145, Streets Public Works, its revenue is also interest, and it was used to pay for the downtown specific plan, EIR. Do some active funds, they're currently collecting revenue from new development. Expenditures are made pursuant to the city's adopted growth-related public facilities needs report for 2005 through 2020. This slide here will show you the balance of those funds. They have no expenditures, but they are active and currently accepting fees. Of the active funds that have expenditures, this is Fund 205, Streets Public Works. Its revenue source is developer fees and interest, and expenditure of banking fees, and also a transfer for management fees. Fund 209, Parks and Recreation, its revenue source is developer fees and interest, and it was used to pay for Silver Park Phase 2. And Fund 210, Police and General Fund, its revenue source is also developer fees and interest, and it was used to pay for the Riverbank Museum demolition and general plan update. So, is our recommendation that the City Council adopt a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2013-14 Annual AB 1600 Report of System Development Fee Activity. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Are there any questions or comments from the City Council?
Nice report.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to, it's just a clarification of the, what is it, 145, the overpass, underpass?
Mm-hmm.
You said that was used to, for the EIR. That was just part of the EIR, was that not?
Yes.
Okay.
It was just part, yes.
Just to clarify that, it didn't pay for the entire EIR.
No, it did not.
I have no further comment or questions, straightforward. Is there anyone from the public wishing to make a comment or question? All right, I bring it back to the council for action or further comments.
A further comment, okay. In our report, there's an overview of documented funds, and we have the Railroad Crossing Fund 146, and then again, a Railroad Crossing Fund 150. These are, where's Dongo? Oh, Maricela, maybe you can answer. These are two separate funds, and are they active or inactive?
These are two separate funds. They are inactive. The only one that currently has a balance is the Fund 146. I mean, it has about $300, $400 within that account, no longer collecting revenue. What we're waiting for is for several railroad crossing projects that we have that are going along Patterson Road, and then we'll recommend a reappropriation towards that since it will still be within the realm of improvements to railroad crossings. Okay. Thank you.
My request still stands.
So, I make a motion that we approve item 5.3.
5.3.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion to approve item 5.3 in a dual second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 5.4, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 95, Streets and Sidewalk Sections 95.46, Fees of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, Ms. Maricela Garcia, our finance director, will be providing an overview of this item for you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Tonight, I have a really brief presentation requesting an amendment to our current streets and sidewalks chapter of our municipal code, specifically with regards to our encroachment permits and fees. And I just want to clarify upfront for everybody who's listening in the audience and for the council as well, that there are no fees being requested, no amendment to the fees being requested at this time. So, just really briefly, currently, we're undergoing a fee review of all of our fees within our development services department. That's going to include our building permit fees, our well destruction fees, our septic tank abandonment, and our encroachment permit fees. Currently, our encroachment permit fee is $75, and it was established to recoup the costs associated with the administration as well as the inspections that are related to the work under the issuance of the permit. Such work that requires an encroachment permit includes things that range from a resident replacing a sidewalk to more involved trench work in the roadway that's performed by a utility department. I'm sure you've driven by PG&E or AT&amp;T several times in, in the road, making trenches where they're making some, some maintenance work that's being performed on their pipelines. And so, they require an encroachment permit, which is $75. And sometimes you'll note the level of work that's being done within our streets is, is significant. And so, we do feel that reviewing our fees is appropriate at this time in order to recoup all of our costs that are associated with that. We are evaluating a tiered rate that will more equitably assess the fees so that a resident who is working within our right-of-way is not paying the same fee as, say, a utility company who's working within the streets and trenching. And so, our amendment request tonight request just two changes. The first is there's reference to the Public Works Department issuing these permits. Currently, it's actually the Development Services Department. Public Works is a division of that, and so, we'd like to make the amendment to reflect the correct department who is issuing those. And then the second is to allow us to amend our fees via a resolution rather than ordinance. And this is something similar to what we requested for our garbage solid waste rates. And so, that would take the timing of amendments of fees from a 50-to-60-day process, which requires two public notices, two public meetings, and then a 30-day wait period, down to about a 15-day process. We would still require the two public notices to our residents. It would still require one public hearing, but the effective date of the resolution would be immediately after the vote. And so, tonight, we are recommending this amendment to, for your consideration, to allow our encroachment permit fees to be established by resolution. And our intent is to bring the revised fees to the City Council at the first meeting in January. I'm available for any questions.
I thought I read, you're gonna bring it back to us in December.
I was hoping December, but I'll, I'll be on a bit of a vacation, so... I'm asking for a reprieve.
Need to revise the, just make sure you revise the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions of Maricela?
I've just got a couple. So, the whole purpose of going with the resolution is to speed up the process, but it's still going to give the public enough time to have proper input and notice about what goes on.
That's correct. That process will not change because we are required under law, and I'm sure Annabelle would not let me get away with it.
You're right.
Job, Annabelle. Thank you. There's a lot, this right here is fine. I'm just gonna make a comment. I know I'm probably way out of line on this, but you're talking about PG&E, and some of the requirements PG&E has right now, they've changed their regulations or their design specifications that you can't do anything to interrupt or, or, you know, like, grade your surface of the street if that pipe that they laid is three feet below the surface. While they're doing their work, we need to bring up the, a regulation or something to say you have to be more than four feet below the surface, because if we need to grade our streets, rework our streets, we're prohibited from doing that because PG&E has changed their, their rules for, or their regulations for us. So, and this is not, you brought it up, so it's a segue. I know it's a very far-reaching segue, but that's a comment I'll make later on.
What I can say to that is that we have developed a very good relationship with the staff from PG&E that works within our city, and so, it is something that we can address with them at one of the meetings that we happen to hold.
Need to go through the engineer and your Public Works. Okay, now, let's go back on track. I'm sorry, I wasted all that time. Wasn't wasted. Are there any additional comments on item 5.4? If not, any from the public wishing to address item 5.4? See, now, I bring it back to the council for recommendation or for follow-on actions.
I move we accept item 5.4.
A second.
We, I have a motion to accept item 5.4, which is the considering ordinance, which would be approved after a long extended vacation in early January, and I have a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6, new business, LRA, item 6.1, accept report on status of LRA budget for first quarter fiscal year 2014-15.
Mayor, and Members of the Council, or should I say Chair and Members of the Board, this evening, Ms. Melissa Holdaway, our senior administrative analyst for the Local Redevelopment Authority, will be presenting an overview of the first quarter budget. And Ms. Debbie Olson, our executive director, is also available to address any questions at the conclusion of the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Authority Members. I bring you the first quarter...
I bring you the first quarter budget after a long wait. What I've done is, in the last fiscal year, I had lumped the whole budget as one. This fiscal year, after consultation with the Finance Department and working out a better way of presenting this budget to you, we've separated the funds individually, and that's what you're seeing now in this quarterly report. Fund 197 is the leasehold revenue that we receive, and this is the revenue that was received from July through September. The utility revenue was a little low in receipt through September 30th just for a lag of hetch, hetchy billing that was coming through. There was, PG&E installed a new meter, and so it kind of slowed the process up for a little while. And so that is back on track. And in fact, in the second quarter, you will see that revenue coming back through. I had to break down the expenses because there are quite a few since we do separate them down and line item them so you can see them. The administrative expenses, professional services, there was none in this quarter that were expended. That caught up with us in the second quarter, which you'll see in the next report. Here in the facility operations and maintenance, we did have the electrical infrastructure upgrades coming through. That is the expense for a new transformer and also several repairs done on the electrical system that's out there right now. So that left us in a slight deficit of $212,000 just because the revenue stream wasn't there, which is in the second quarter. Fund 198 is the grants, and the only open grant we do have is OEA grant. That was approved in August, well, let's see, July, August, I think, is when that finally went through. And we've got our approval on that. The first quarter is our salaries and fringe, which make up about 90% of our salary. The 10% is captured in leasehold revenue for our match and administrative expenses as well. Professional services, the only legal we had is for our legal team that do approved OEA legal expenses for the LRA. Fund 199, the Esca number one. This was in the midst, at the end of fiscal year 1314. We were working on a modification and working with the Army to extend some work that was needing done that hadn't been captured initially. And so we had extra funds, and so we had to wait for that. And so we've brought that back into this fiscal year along with the budget. We had gotten, we'd gotten a lump sum, and that's the balance of the lump sum that we have on hand. And then the expenses make up for what that revenue is for. We did receive $117,000 in that modification, and that was for fencing and the tool crib that wasn't captured. And I think that was for that payment.
Fencing for where?
I'm sorry?
Fencing for where?
For the emergency fencing, we had, we did, there was a safety issue with the open trenches that were out in the production area. And so we fenced them ahead of the approval from the Army, and we did get that approval in the modification to approve that expenditure, but we had prepaid it in advance. Any questions?
What transformer were you replacing or repairing?
It's the, it's the five MVA, it's the huge transformer that...
That's adjacent to where we were the other day?
The main sub, yeah. And it's going to a 15 MVA that we purchased.
Is that a hetch, hetchy or PG&E?
It's neither.
Neither?
No, it belongs to us.
It belongs to the LRA, they just have different contractors doing work.
That's just because the growth out at the site with all the new businesses, we are getting really, the electrical needs upgraded so we can support all that new business and the growth that is going to be coming down the next couple of years.
Four months?
Four, yeah.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Nope, looks pretty good, thank you.
Are there any areas where of concern for payment?
We do have, we do have some past due balance, we have the Army that has $28,000 in arrears for utilities that we have been working consistently with them on, and they're working on it. Yeah, for the OCB repair. We did an invoice for that, and we're waiting for the approval to come through on that one as well.
Any others concerns?
Nope. I just, if I could get any comments about if you guys like this format, if you like the funds being separated instead of lumped together, I thought I'd bring this to you. And if you like it, I'm going to continue to present this way. If not, then I can go back to the old way.
I like the way it's presented. I'd like to have a total summary.
Okay.
You know, you give us the detail.
Each fund.
Okay, here's the summary. Okay, and right now, it appears like we're ahead of schedule in a lot of the areas in the arrears and others.
Yes.
Especially for billing.
Yes.
And it appears like we're on track, but a total summary would give us that glance.
Okay.
I think it's easier to follow it the way that you put it together this way, so I'd like you to continue with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the way it reads, too.
Okay. Then I'll just do a summary at the end of it and bring it all together so you can see the whole picture.
Are there any comments or questions of the LRA staff? If not, I bring it back to the board for recommendation to accept.
I'll make a motion that we accept the quarterly report from the LRA.
I second.
We have a motion to accept LRA item 6.1 and a second.
Authority members, Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6.2, adjustment to 2015 City Council meeting schedules.
Mayor and members of the City Council, in a previous action, City Council canceled the meeting that conflicted with Veterans Day and the second meeting in December that will happen next month right before Christmas. However, in looking to 2015, we noticed that there would potentially be some additional cancellation and then the traditional cancellation of the second meeting in December. Mayor O'Brien had mentioned that StanCOG went dark for the month of July and that that worked out well for both the Policy Board members as well as the staff of StanCOG, and suggested that I bring before you a recommendation for a modified summer schedule as well. And so this item is presented for discussion and direction and whether or not that's something the entire council would like to consider and just to take feedback on this. So the proposal that I presented to you is to cancel the meeting that follows Memorial Day and the meeting that follows Labor Day. And the philosophy behind that is that those two holidays are very popular for people. A lot of people travel, a lot of people are out of town and want to enjoy that weekend, in addition to the staff as well. And so that to take a break on those meetings would minimize the impact to the public because they're probably preoccupied doing family and holiday activities. And it also provides an opportunity for the City Council, who spends the majority of their weekends preparing for meetings, and the staff as well, to be able to take that full holiday. So that was the rationale. And at this point, I would hand it over to the mayor, who might want to add additional comments based on his suggestion.
I do believe that this council is smart enough to know that when we lose an opportunity to have discourse in public, that we'll probably have to take it up under special meetings later on, depending on our workload. So I do like to have the last, I think it should be blanket, the last meeting in May and the first meeting in September scheduled out, now, no meetings. But I also have another recommendation, and this is not for the enjoyment of weekends, it's not for the enjoyment of family. This is to help the financial staff and others get their end-of-year reports done, which begins or ends at the end of June, and then they have a certain amount of time to get these reports together. So I would also recommend that our first meeting in July be canceled to let the staff do their end-of-year report. I do believe that, Maricela, you might want to agree with that since most of the reports are yours and you are giving, feeding us reports as well as trying to get the reports done. So that, I believe, those are three meetings that we are stepping away from. Had we kept our Monday meetings, we would have been losing those meetings anyway. So with the Tuesday, I do believe that it would be beneficial on two for holidays and the third one in July to expedite the reporting for the financial staff and others that have to do their end-of-year reports.
And Mayor, you bring up a good point, and that is that even if we do not have a meeting, that a lot of time and energy goes into preparing the staff reports and preparing the meetings on the staff side just as there's a lot of review that goes on on the council side. So when there is a meeting, it doesn't, it allows us actually to catch up on some other work that helps prepare for future meetings. So it is, it sometimes can actually lead to greater productivity.
Comments?
Well, I think that Mayor made a good point. If we do go ahead and eliminate these meetings, it's going to help in a number of ways. Reduce a little bit of stress with the staff and even ourselves with our traveling that we have for those holidays. But likewise, I like what he said. This council is ready, if the need to be, to come to a special meeting that will be put together at the convenience of all of us if it is needed. So I would go along with this proposition.
I think this sounds like a good recommendation. I agree with this, too. And so the date for July would be July 14?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I will also just put a plug in that we will be needing a special meeting for the budget in May or June. So we'll be, we'll be making sure that you...
And you also have the financial review?
We have the financial review in September. So it will basically keep, we'll probably keep still having two meetings each of those months, but...
Since we're eliminating around 18% of the meetings, do we eliminate 18% of our pay?
If you'd like, you can certainly recommend that.
18% of nothing is still nothing.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think you guys all make about, you know, maybe a nickel an hour.
18% of their meetings are going to go away with us.
Yeah, I would publicly acknowledge the work that each one of you puts into preparing for the meetings. Each of you meet with me, you brief, you review the reports. And in addition to being, doing your regular responsibilities and fulfilling responsibility to other boards in which you represent the city. So I don't, I think that sometimes is lost on the members of the public, and I would like to thank you publicly for that work.
All right, so the direction. We are, oh, is there any comments from the public on this? I bring that back, okay, so this is... It's not a, it's just a scheduling issue, right?
Yes.
So all we have to do is say, okay, go forth.
Yes.
Anyone want to say go forth on item 6.2?
Go forth on item 6.2.
All right, go forth, you got it?
Plus in July 14.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll also come back with a resolution if we need to, on consent calendar, yeah.
All right. Item 7, comments. Item 7.1, staff comments.
Mayor and City Council, Ms. Sue Fitzpatrick.
Mayor, members of the council and the community, just a reminder that we have our Christmas festival coming up this Saturday, which is November 29th, and we'll have the craft fair starting downtown at noon. And then the parade will start about 5:30. And immediately following the parade will be the tree lighting ceremony. So hopefully everyone will come out. I know the staff has worked real hard. Luann Bain has worked real hard pulling everything together along with the Recreation Supervisor Carrie Webb and Tim Doughty, our Park Supervisor. In fact, this year, for the first time, I think, and at least for however long I've been here, the Public Works Department is going to have a float, and also the Parks and Recreation Department will have one. So we'll be able to show off what we have, and that'll be fun, so.
Is the big man going to be there?
Yes.
Okay, good.
He will be. So hopefully everyone will come out, and I think it's going to be fun. We're really excited.
And when is rain predicted?
No rain until Sunday, and then it can rain all at once for the rest of the season.
Okay.
Because we're done with our activities for a little while.
We'd like to add a special item that declaring no rain in the City of Riverbank on Saturday.
Paul, you know how to lighten things up.
I just want to say I think downtown looks very beautiful right now with the lights, very festive, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And speaking of lights, Mr. Michael Radel, our Public Works Superintendent, would like to provide an update on PG, a brief update in response to Mr. Bermudez's comments on the lights in terms of the process that PG&E uses to determine when they can add lights and when they cannot.
Evening, Mayor, council members. So basically, as you know, we have two different streetlights within the city, ours and those that belong to Pacific Gas and Electric. So when we request a streetlight in the area for Pacific Gas and Electric, we make the request for the light, then PG&E will come out and take a look at the pole that you requested light to be installed on. And if there is structure on the pole, in other words, if there's too many crossarms or there's a transformer or something like that that will impede that pole, they won't let us install the streetlight on it. So they determine where it goes. And typically, what they'll do with us is say, okay, we can't go on this pole, but we can go on this pole adjacent to it, which is what we've done. And we have, to this point, and I think about 90% of these, or all of them with the exception of one, have been requested by Mr. Bermudez and installed. So we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven streetlights over in that area. We actually had one that was requested on Kansas that PG&E basically told us no because there was too many structures on the pole. And the next adjacent pole actually already, already had a streetlight. So in essence, it's not us that decides whether the streetlight will go up or not, it's PG&E. And then obviously, if there is a pole that doesn't have a structure, but it doesn't have 120 volts available on that pole, then we can put a streetlight on it, provided we're willing to pay for the transformer to go on and the streetlight. So that basically is the process in a nutshell. And this typically can take PG&E, we usually have to push, and it can take PG&E usually about two or three months. So in response to Mr. Bermudez's request, we have been, on several occasions, working with PG&E to get lights up.
And we appreciate Mr. Bermudez and members of the public bringing these to our attention. The public relies our eyes and ears, and so we do appreciate when streetlights go out, that they let us know if there's issues that we may not be aware of. It's very helpful, so.
Yeah, and it works really well, just like Mr. Bermudez pointed out to the two tonight. And I wrote the poll numbers down, and we will get ahold of PG&E and let them know and to take a look at that and get that handled so we can get the lights fixed. So, and what we have been doing in the new requests that we are doing with PG&E, even though we're paying for the light, we have been having them install LEDs.
A lot of the newer areas that even in the older part of town, when we start developing, those lights would be owned by the city or by PG&E?
I would assume that they'll probably be owned by us. PG&E is actually trying to get out of the streetlight business. And one of the things that we all know, and we've been pushing PG&E for, is that we've now updated our system and our lights to the most advanced, energy-efficient lights available, and PG&E is still using old technology. So we've been pushing PG&E to get in and get their lights changed out, too. But we still get, keep getting the same party statement, which is they're now still saying 1415, but I suspect we'll get into 15 and they'll start saying 1516. But I have been keeping in contact with my contacts at PG&E that helped us do the initial change out on the LEDs and let him know that, to keep us up at the top of the list.
Thank you. There's some monies available to help cities do the changeover, and then PG&E pays back, and I... and I would just like us to investigate that. I think I mentioned that once before.
Yeah, there are a couple of different avenues that you can go with that, whether it be through just PG&E or through the Energy Commission.
Right.
Because as you know, our first go-around was through the Energy Commission, and that grant was secured through them. PG&E did the work for us, we paid PG&E to do it. Now, when it comes to their lights and changing out their lights, unless they want to either give them to us or sell them to us at a reduced rate, it should be at no cost to us anyway for them to change out their lights.
Right, it should be, it will be.
And the dilemma, my understanding is that PG&E is doing a lot of these contracts, so they'll do the work for other agencies, because they're getting reimbursed for it, but that's putting their, their lights at the back of the list. Is that, is that a correct...
Yeah, that is very accurate, and PG&E is, I mean, it benefits both their customers and PG&E because of the energy savings. So you're meeting the assembly bill requirements, but also, like she said, it's putting everything that they own, and they own a lot within the state of California, on the back burner. All right, thank you.
And just want to congratulate the council again, and look forward to seeing all of you in the parade on Saturday evening, and we're looking forward to a very fun and memorable evening for our community. And in the meantime, happy Thanksgiving to all of you in our community.
Thank you. Item 7.2, council authority member comments. Council member Jones Cruz.
I just wanted to reiterate again that I just wanted to thank the public for their vote of confidence, and really look forward to serving this community in the next four years, and that we can get accomplished up here and move forward with our strategic plan and get a lot of stuff done. So I just wanted to say thank you again for all that. I really appreciate your vote in me and your confidence in me to get the job done. I appreciate that. I had an excellent time volunteering at the Veterans Luncheon. It was a really neat opportunity, I hadn't had a chance to do that before, and so I really valued that experience of going and doing that, and I would encourage, if there's any other folks out there, to be sure to volunteer, just really, it's a good thing to do, and it makes you feel good at the end of the day when you can volunteer and do some service, stuff like that, so I'd encourage that. I wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and a safe, enjoyable holiday, and look forward to seeing you guys next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Barbara Martinez.
I don't have much tonight, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out. I know that it is getting colder and colder and more days of rain, but happy Thanksgiving to everyone, hope to see you on Saturday, and we have a lot of community events going on at this time of the year. So remember someone who is less fortunate than you are, and think about them, and do what you can, check on your neighbors, say hello, just try to take care of each other, and see you after Thanksgiving and the parade.
Nice, Mayor.
Just like to remind everyone that this is a time where lots of people need help, especially with food and things like that, so go through your cupboards and support the local groups that are collecting food to make Thanksgiving and the Christmas season better for those among us that aren't quite economically well off, and likewise, I am just overjoyed at the support I got during the election, but I'm more overjoyed that I don't got to run for four years, because three times in three years is too much.
I hope that wasn't an FPPC violation.
I do, too.
Thank you. First, I would like to make some comments from council member Tucker. I had the opportunity to visit with her last week, and she, I hope, did return home. I believe she returned home on Friday. We talked about some of the issues that we are going to be facing next year. One of the things that she would like to see is that when, before we take a look at the ordinance for feral cats, that we have a study session on the feral cats issues, both impassionate and just straightforward with the facts. Looking at the ordinance, and that she wanted everyone to come on up with their own ideas, if the ordinance doesn't make it so well, we'll come on up during the study session, we'll have discussion on it. For me, there's some issues that are coming on up that we need to move as fast as government will allow us to, and some of these are the annexation processes. We had a good meeting with the county, and the county has offered some alternatives to the North County Corridor, which will greatly benefit the city if we move fast in a couple of areas, as well as the annexation processes for some of the newer developments. I also would like to reiterate now more publicly that we start using friends to access easement rights on the railroad for possible expansion or beautification or both, as we're all concerned, especially along the Patterson Road, see if we could talk to our friends that make decisions and laws, and if we could just get the dialogue going. One of the concerns that the railroad has is if we give up, you have to maintain and can't abandon it, and we'll make guarantees along those lines that we will not abandon what we take on. Okay. With that, we're going to go into closed session, consisting of item 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957.6, Agency Representative Jill Anderson, City Manager, Employee Organizations Riverbank, Miscellaneous Employees, Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit, and Riverbank Executive Management. Before we go into closed session, is there anyone wishing to make a comment or make a comment on item 8.1, closed session? Okay, and before I close, I know most people will not be around, there's also item 10, Information Items, which consists of the warrant register. There's some particular items that you may want to take a look at or not. I shouldn't have directed it, huh?
No, that's fine.
And with that, we are going into closed session. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, all. This is a report out from closed session, item 9.1. Report out from closed session on item 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff, and with that, meeting is adjourned.
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.